Yep. All set? Okay, good evening Hatfield, welcome to the September 17th, 2024 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. As usual, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and start by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. I have just a few announcements tonight. I just want to remind everyone that the last concert in the park of the summer is happening this Friday night. I think they'll start at 6 o'clock, right? Is that right? Six?
Yes.
There's signs around town, in any case, and those are always great. So I just wanted to remind people about that. A couple of, the Council on Aging has a couple of events coming up next week. I believe on Wednesday night is their Black Birch Vineyard event. And then on September 27th, they're having a polka event at the Pavilion. Tickets are required for both, so if you're interested, you should check out their website. And we are now in the process of finalizing the plans for an October 11th ribbon cutting event on the Route 5 and 10 project, which will include our local senator and representative, as well as some state officials. Secretary Howe is potentially coming out, which is really terrific, under Secretary Stolba. So it should be a really nice event, especially for the residents who've, you know, been patient and have had a lot of disruption out there, and I think we're all gonna be happy to see that come to a close. So we'll have, there'll be information on social media and on the website about, and it will be open to the public. So, we'd like to have you come to that. Ed?
Oh, I just want to thank everyone that attended the COA picnic. We had representatives there from the state to award us our dementia-friendly community. And the town did have training on a few people that got the training. I think Marlene was one of them, and Sean Robinson sort of was the host. And Jerry from the COA did an outstanding job, so I just want to thank everyone that attended.
Thank you, Ed. Anything?
No.
That's all I had for announcements. So is anyone here tonight for public forum? No? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and jump right into posted business. On the posted agenda tonight, there's quite a few items on the consent agenda, which are typically items that can be just voted on quickly without a lot of discussion. And while I don't necessarily think any of these are at all controversial, I still think we should talk about them, mainly because it might be good to let townspeople know about some of the events coming up. So the first item under the consent agenda that I think we can just go ahead and do is the approval of the August 27th and September 11th.
I'll make a motion that we approve the August 27th meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we accept the September 11th meeting minutes as well.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we have a number of requests for liquor licenses. And then also, Marlene, the request for ceremonial bonfire is sort of lumped in with the minutes, but we need to do that, right? Yeah, okay.
Oh, I s-
It's not separated out?
You're right, you're right, that, yeah.
So, um-
That is separate.
We have a request here to ask for a permit for a ceremonial bonfire for the Hatfield Fire Association. That's for the annual bonfire on October 12th. As we know, this event is fantastic every year, and it's certainly planned and executed by the very capable hands of our fire department. So I have no, I have no questions and certainly no problems with it. I'll make a motion that we approve a ceremonial bonfire permit for the Hatfield Firefighters Association for October 12th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thanks. Oh, I see, it's in two places here. So we also have a request for a one-day wine and malt liquor license to Beauty Bar for a Fall Craft Fair on September 29th at the Pavilion from 11 to 3:00. And then there's a second request for the same day and time, right? You want to come up and maybe explain how that's, there's, are there two separate events that are happening? No. You want, can you guys come up to the mic just?
Yeah.
How are you, Kate? Selena? I think it might be good to just sort of let townspeople know what the event is about, and then we can get to the liquor license part.
Yes, so I would like my salon, the Beauty Bar, to host almost like a business networking event with a bunch of local crafters and vendors at the Pavilion. I think it's a great way for other people in town to come and see these crafters and what they have to offer and sell. And it would be at the Pavilion on the 29th from 11 to 3:00.
I'm putting it on my calendar right now. I'm not being rude.
No, it'll be a good time.
Yeah, that sounds great. And then, and so you're doing it too, so you're pulling separate?
So I'm one of the local vendors that are joining the craft event.
Excellent.
So Kate had asked, because a lot of them are selling crafts, some are selling food to take home. But she had asked the Mill River Tavern to come down and maybe have some food and beverages. So we asked for the one-day permitting during that time.
I just, I just have a question. I'm just curious, now you're gonna have two separate licenses for the same event. Are you gonna have two separate locations for serving whatever your license is indicating? Or is that gonna be all combined somehow?
Yeah, the permit I'm pulling is for the beer guy, who's coming and selling beer. And then I'm not sure if Selena needs a separate for what her, what she would be selling.
And so that's like a Mill River thing?
Correct.
I see, so there'll be two different places you can buy? Okay.
Correct.
That makes sense.
Both of them are selling wine and, wine and beer, that's my understanding. And that will have to be a designated area.
Yes.
Yes.
I think that sounds fantastic, and I'm sure all the paperwork is in order, Karen. I think it sounds great. I put it on my calendar.
Great.
So I would just entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we, can we approve them both at the same time?
I would do them separately.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the one-day wine and malt liquor license to Beauty Bar for Fall Craft Fair on the 29th Lions Club Pavilion from noon until 3:00.
Second.
A motion made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve the one-day wine and malt liquor license to Garage Two Tavern doing business as Mill River Tavern for the Fall Craft Fair on September 29th from noon until 3:00 also.
I'll second that. The only question I had, I mean, the police chief's all set with this, right?
I understand that the police department was contacted at the time, but that was only based on Kate's request, and it wasn't necessary.
Okay.
However, I did have a conversation earlier today with the lieutenant, and he was gonna, as the chief was away today. He was gonna ask the chief if he had an opportunity to either contact me or you, but I have not heard anything.
Okay. That's all. I just had a question. I did second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is an alcohol one-day license for the bonfire for the-
Yes, we, I think that's coming up next. Or did I? I guess, oh, I skipped over it, yeah, okay, sorry. Skipped over, we're getting there. We're getting there. Just want to get this stuff, okay. Okay, one-day liquor license for the Hatfield Firefighters Association for the annual bonfire, again on October 12th, 2024. This would be from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. You bring in outside vendors for the alcohol.
Yes, so the fire association purchases the alcohol. Fish Tales Bar and Grill is going to be our bartenders for the whole evening. So it's all bartender, bartender-certified people serving the alcohol with the tip certification and all that kind of stuff. And they're gonna run two separate bars. Carrie from, the manager for Fish Tales is gonna, is arranging all of that stuff for us. She's working hand-in-hand with myself and some of the other committee members to make sure it's all in order and in line. I reached out to Amherst Insurance, we're just waiting for our policy. It's the same one every year, Karen and I have spoken about it. So the application is there, and the insurance policy is coming, it just takes a couple of weeks. And so we just don't have it in hand, but we will by the week of the event, which is usually what happens.
So you know, Carrie, the alcohol cannot come from Fish Tales, though?
No, it's not. We order it through a company, and she and her people are serving it. So we do that part of it, yeah. And it gets delivered to the location, and then it gets picked up and taken away-
Oh, I'm sorry, Ed.
Afterwards. None of it's through, like with her specifically. She's just assisting. And then-
She's just serving?
Right, like serving, correct. And we have, I've already talked to the police chief, we're all set there. We have three detail officers hired for the evening that night, along with a separate security company. So we have more than enough security.
Okay, I saw that, USA Securities, I was wondering what that was.
So we always have to-
Security company?
Per the, we can only have 3,000 people, so we hire one detail officer for every 1,000. And then, so we always have more detail officers than we need, because we've never hit 3,000 people. And then we hire security on top of that that monitor the grounds. And then on top of that, we hire four extra people that are just specific to backstage security that are hired for the evening. So we've got more than enough qualified people that are there for security purposes for the night.
I've been many times, and it's like a well-oiled machine.
And I have to be honest, I think we've only ever had like, maybe in the 10 or 12 years we've been doing this, maybe like two incidences that the police really have had to do anything. So knock on wood, or whatever anybody wants to knock on, we've done really well with the amount of people that we have down there that the night turns out okay. And we have the trash pickup setup and all of that stuff, so the town doesn't look like a mess afterwards. By the time 2:00 AM comes around, the town's picked up, and nobody wakes up to any messes on the streets, so.
Well, you guys have always done a fantastic job, and it's a good fundraiser for you, and it's good for the town, so.
Yes, please order your tickets.
I already have my tickets. I have my tickets, but I was, how are tickets selling? Pretty good.
Tickets are not where they normally are this time of year, but the radio ads started yesterday, and that's usually when it starts to pick up. And, I mean, we'll be fine. People usually wait, because they wait for the weather.
Yeah.
So, um, knock on wood with that, too. We've never had a-
All the time, and people, it's always last minute. That's, that's, yeah, believe me, I lose a lot of night sleep about that. Okay, any more questions or anything? I mean, this is, we do this every year, you do this every year. We, I have complete confidence in what you guys know, knowing what you're doing. Okay. So I'm-
I'll make a motion to grant a one-day liquor license to the Hatfield Firefighters Association for the bonfire, October 12th.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Carrie, you want to say who's playing?
This year's headliner is gonna be Frankie Ballard, he's a country singer. And then we had Aiden Brown here last year. He's coming back and playing a little bit more than he did last year. We have a new gentleman, Charlie Collins. And then local is gonna be Cottonwood. So Charlie will open up our night, Aiden Brown will play, Cottonwood will then play, and then Frankie Ballard will finish out the night. So some great music all around for the evening.
Excellent. It's always great. I ended up having to miss it last year.
Yeah.
I was away, but I don't, I try never to miss it.
The committee appreciates you guys supporting us each year, so we have our ducks in a row.
Well, we appreciate it, because it ultimately supports a lot of other things in town.
Yeah. Great, thanks.
If you want to hang around, Bob, did you, you wanted us to take something a little out of order tonight? We can do that. But let me get through, let me get through this first little batch of stuff. Okay, so we have the approval of the all-alcoholic beverages license to KF Fish Tales, Inc., doing business as Fish Tales Bar and Grill. So this is the official license transfer, correct?
It is.
Make a motion to approve it?
There's a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No, because we already-
Yeah, we already, this is just-
This is just that the license came in.
We approved the application, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So again, really happy about this, and congratulations to Carrie on that.
Yeah, this, this took quite some time for the process.
It did.
Longer than it typically does.
Okay. Doing a lot of signing over here tonight, bear with us for a second. Okay, and then we have the First Congregational Church, the Real Folks Society, is asking for permission to hold the bake sale that they always have on Election Day, which is November 5th. That would be at the Town Hall from 8:30 in the morning until 1:00 in the afternoon. It's the best part of Election Day.
It is. They've been absent the last two years, and so they're coming back.
Nice to have them coming back. Do we actually have to have a formal vote on that? I mean, it doesn't hurt, right? I'll make a-
Yes, it doesn't hurt at all.
I'll make a motion to grant permission to the First Congregational Church to hold a bake sale here in the Town Hall on November 5th, from 8:30 in the morning till 1:00 in the afternoon.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye, aye, everybody? Okay. So we, our next topic is some appointments, but Bob is here with a very quick item that's ahead on the agenda that we, we don't need to make you stay all night. If you, I will let you hopscotch forward here.
I appreciate it. So this is a request for an additional 3,000 of ARPA funds to fund the software upgrade for Fire and EMS. The quote that went in in the capital project that was submitted last December, the quote was actually last October. And like everybody knows, things have increased in price. They have their annual increase. They did also find that there was one module, because everything is broken down, that was not originally included on the original quote from last October, which is the reason for the increase. And the point of this project is to move everything into one program. We currently pay for three different systems, and this will put everything into one. And we actually found out that we could tie in with North Hampton, Hadley, South Hadley, and Granby for this program as well. So we would be able to have access to their pre-plans, and we can send our pre-plans and have, they could have access to ours if we're doing mutual aid with each other, so there's an added benefit that I found out after the fact.
So luckily, I actually have one of my capital planning members here. So when we, you know, we had a meeting after town meeting to start thinking about spending the last of our ARPA funds, which has to be done by the 31st. We designated most of the money, but did do a holdback for the very reason that we expected that there may be some changes. So I have no problem with this. I mean, we know how this works, that things change. Some of these prices for things were, you know-
Did you already approve a change for the schools or the ARPA funds that we?
An adjustment, yeah, you moved the monies around.
Yeah, but I think there's still-
It may not be more money, but it's-
Yeah, yeah.
Right, it's not more money.
Oh, right, theirs was more of a moving from one project to another.
Yeah.
But we, we, I forget what the cushion was off the top of my head, that we left. We left a little bit of a cushion, so that if there were any overruns on any, anything, we had the money for it.
Yes.
So it was more than $3,000. I think it was like 90, well, whatever, it was more than three. So I'm, I'm fine with this. I mean, you fine with it? It's not a full committee or anything, but?
I like the idea that you can be able to combine three into one, and I think it's a good use of the ARPA funds for this, this software program, so I'm happy with it, too.
And, and the decision had sort of been tentatively that any extra funds would be used for turnout here for the fire department. So ultimately, would have gone to the, the fire department probably anyway.
That's true.
Just because we can buy that quickly. But, and it's always necessary. So, uh, do we, we need to vote that?
Yes, I do.
So I will make a motion that we approve an additional, it's 3,000 even?
Yes.
An additional $3,000 in ARPA funds to go to the computer software that Bob just mentioned for the fire department.
Second.
A motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. Go have yourself a good night, Bob.
Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna move right along here to topic two, which is a series of appointments and one resignation. So we are being asked to appoint Holland Hoagland to the local cultural council.
Make a motion to appoint Holland Hoagland to the local cultural council.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next is to appoint Betty Snow to the Hatfield Housing Authority Board.
Housing Authority will need to step forward and vote with the Select Board.
Okay.
They don't have a quorum.
You don't have a quorum? Does it have to happen simultaneously, or could they, they can't take it up at their next meeting?
My understanding has to be simultaneously.
Well, do you want to hang around and see if they show up, and we can backtrack?
So, yeah. But this is why we need more members.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought Judy was, said she'd be here, and Alex, I didn't hear from at all.
Judy?
Shell.
Okay. She was a recent appointment, right?
Isn't she the, for the capewalk? She's the tenant representative on that.
Yeah, but, and, and Betty is, is at Capewalk as well, right?
I don't know.
Oh, no, Betty lives on Elm Street, I think.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I've seen her at COA.
Yeah, that's, that's where I saw her, was at COA. Okay, well, if you don't mind, we'll give it a-
Yeah, I'll give it another half hour.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a long walk from over.
All right, sorry, Chris. And then we have a resignation from Ross Beck from the Finance Committee that we need to accept.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Ross Beck from the Recreation Committee.
Second.
A motion made in second, any further discussion?
We should send him a letter of thank you for his service.
I don't, we don't have to sign anything, right? There's nothing in here. We don't, we just accept that, right?
Correct.
There's no form, okay. Okay, we are just moving right along here.
Could I ask one question, since you are taking up appointments? We amended the agenda, it was added to Town Administrator Report, but not to hold up Tammy. She's here for the request-
Yeah.
To adjust an employee in that office. As you know, Patty is no longer, Patty Cotton's no longer the treasure collector. So Tammy is requesting to reclassify her.
Okay, so she stayed on as an employee, because she's still been working, and you became the, so what has her title been? Are we just formalizing something that probably should have been done a while ago? Yeah, okay.
It sounds like it.
That's fine. So actually, it's, it's really nice to see her back in the building, and I'm sure it's nice for you to have her back. So I just wanted to clarify that, so. Okay, I'll take a motion on this. I'll make a motion, sorry, to change the position of Patricia Cotton to Assistant Treasure Collector for the town of Hatfield.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you, Tammy. There's a signature, Ed. Okay. Thanks. Okay, so now we're going back to the discussion with the water superintendent regarding establishing a timber sales revolving fund. Hello, Tony.
Hello.
How you doing?
Good. So I prepared a little speech, just because I don't want to leave anything out.
Okay.
So bear with me, just reading this through to you. Couple of years ago, Selectman Jaworski asked us about doing a timber harvest on our watershed property. And we looked into that and asked town meetings, 55,000, and that was approved out of water sewer reserves. I contacted and met with Lincoln Fish, our original forester, that had done work up there before. Prior to me, starting here, thanks to Ed Robleski keeping particular records, we knew this. At this meeting, he brought his protege, Ry Patton, from Bay State Forestry. At this meeting, we discussed goals to protect the watershed area and sustain a healthy forest. As one of our abutters, Dennis Moore on Lindsay Road, as a forester himself, pointed out, there was much work needed. Pointed out, they pointed out a new forestry plan with visual assessment was needed. With that, they were charging, the DPW director, me, Brandon, said, "Let's do it." Was well below bid requirements. As it turns out, we have about 900 acres of watershed protection area to survey, and they did that. Grants were applied for, and some we did not expect, like the, for paying back the survey and forestry management cutting our plan, were actually approved, as ours were so old, they considered a brand-new plan. So we're, we've got money coming back to us from the state for money that we've paid out for doing this stuff. Currently, we're working on a 26-acre plot, right just in between the Christmas tree farm and basically the top of the reservoir, where they're working on invasive plants. They're actually, a landscaper's out there pulling invasive plants. They're out there cutting vines, the grapevines and stuff that are going up the trees, that are choking them off. They're doing that stuff, and they're actually out marking the timber for what can be harvested. The goal is, is somewhere around October, mid-October, that we'd be putting it out to bid for having this actual cutting done. We're looking for a revolving account, because this, you can't do 900 acres all at once. It's just gonna be a lifelong project. So with the sale of the timber harvest, would be able to pay for the cutting of the vines and invasive plant removal, and also replanting brand-new trees to promote the forest growth. So going forward, that's why we want the revolving account, so we don't have to actually come back to the town and ask for money. We just, we have it there where we can pay for it.
May I ask a couple of questions? Tony, so this is grant money that's coming to the town going into that revolving fund?
No, no, that, that cannot happen.
Right, I didn't think so.
That has to go into our, that has to go into our sewer enterprise fund, according to our accountant or whatever. So out of the 55,000 we originally had, we've spent probably somewhere around 20,000 so far.
That was from the sales of cutting?
No, 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 that was not from, we haven't sold anything yet.
What was the 55 from?
It was town meeting article.
Okay.
That was to get this project rolling. But we've also retained some money back already, but that just goes into water sewer reserves, because we have nowhere to put it.
So that's then warrant article money?
Right.
That would go into the revolving fund? That's not right?
No, no.
Okay.
The only thing that's gonna go into revolving account is the timber sale.
Okay, so the timber sale, and then that would just create, okay.
Okay.
I just-
Yeah.
The 55,000 paid for what?
For the plan.
It paid for the cutting plan.
Okay.
It paid for the surveying, to create the cutting plan.
Okay.
And it's paying for the invasive plant removal currently.
Okay. And so you'll be paying somebody to remove the invasive?
It's already ongoing.
Okay. And so that's the 55,000 warrant article, and you expect to spend the full 55?
Yeah, pretty close.
Okay. And then, but then because of all that work, you'll be able to do a timber harvest, and you want that money to go in to then fund future?
Correct.
All forest?
So the first harvest will be the 26 acres that he spoke about. So whatever with the sale from that, this is going to go into revolving account.
Because there could need to be future plans as well.
Exactly. It's, that, that money from the timber sales will just be ongoing.
Is there any wetlands up there?
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of it.
You'll have to go before Conservation Commission, probably?
No, we do not. It's-
Okay, you're sure?
Well, Bay State Forestry's handling it, and we don't get anywhere near the wetlands.
Okay, so they would know? They would know and notify the town if they need to?
Yeah, that's, that's not an issue, so.
And Bay State Forestry? And Bay State Forestry is Lincoln. I mean, Lincoln knows what he, he knows what he's doing.
He's, he's.
Yeah.
He's on the low and slow right now.
I was gonna say, he's been around for a very long time.
But he knows what he's doing, so, okay.
Just want to make sure we don't run into any problems with Conservation.
I mean, this is, this would operate similar to other such funds in other departments where, you know, these are sort of outside the scope of like normal customary expenses, and and it allows us to really stay on a forestry plan.
Correct.
Which which is really important in terms of protecting that forest land and our waters.
Revolving funds, the Select Board, what they would need to do to enable they support this and approve creating a revolving fund. The town accountant needs a record of that, and then the article, the annual article on the town meeting warrant with the list of all those revolving funds would be, would appear there. So you have to vote it annually for the fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
How much money are we talking about? Getting the wood?
No idea. I mean, right now, timber harvest is paying real good money.
Yeah.
So on twenty-six acres, I'd be, I couldn't even fathom the guess.
Is there a way to to pull it out of revolving once it goes, like in other words, if you had an extremely high amount of, it started building up a lot of money, is there a way to pull it out to use it for other, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it could be used toward, I mean, because it's watershed protection. That's why it's not just forestry, but watershed protection. It's the way I wanted to label it. That way, you know, somebody comes up with, hey, we've got six acres over here that, you know, we'll sell to you for ten thousand. We've got the money. Just take it out of the account and pay for it.
Under that statute, though, there is a spending limit.
Right.
And that has to be, that would appear in the article.
Explain the spending limit.
Spending, what they can spend up to in a year, fiscal year.
Oh, so you can't deplete the account. Right, yeah, well, that's, that would be.
So we'll need to know what that.
That's not.
Right, no, 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 I understand. I, my, my concern actually was more the opposite, that it would build up to be too large, that.
Yeah.
And then if it gets too big, what, is there a mechanism to?
Well, if at some point you realize that, you know, you have really, you know, completed what.
I mean, it'd be a great problem to have them, and I'm not suggesting we ever will, but what is the mechanism for removing money?
So then you would just close, you would just close it out.
And it could go to buy a piece of equipment for the water department or something if a town meeting did that?
Yeah.
Okay. I just don't, I just want to make sure there's a mechanism.
Yeah, that's.
To access that. I mean, obviously, we we would want it to be focused on what you're outlining, but with timber harvest being so lucrative.
Well, right, right now, we're starting with twenty-six acres, but it's a test phase just to see how everything works. Make sure we have no problems with the budding neighbors and everything else. And the next phase is probably gonna be about a hundred and fifty acres, which was on a much larger scale. So, you know, it's.
That's what I'm saying. It could be quite lucrative.
That's also a lot more money you're dishing out to do the invasive removal and marking and bids. Because Bay State Forestry is doing the bids, everything, or pretty much hands off of it, so.
I mean, we're basically found a way to get additional money to protect their forestry up there and and harvest it correctly and keep it healthy. So there are, there are a lot of advantages of having a revolving fund. I think there's more advantages than this advantages. I mean, I know the concern is if it gets too big, that's the only really concern. How do you, but then you have that money there for invasive plants and other stuff that may be needed, whether a culvert needs to be repaired in that property or or whatever, so.
I mean, we, we've done this all along, these forestry management plans. It's just always gone through the general fund. And then the the expenses for like the removal of the invasive species or plans has also come out of, yeah, so.
And now we have a mechanism to get money through the wood that's up there, so it's. It saves on the taxpayers.
Yeah, I like it.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, Tony, thanks for, you know, doing the background work and bringing this to us and coming so prepared with so much information.
It's been a couple of years in the making, but I mean, it's, so, like I said, we're hopeful to have this out to bid beginning October, mid-October, somewhere around there.
And then they would harvest through the winter?
Yeah. Well, possibly, just.
Okay.
Now, does there have to be more rules about this, other than just making a motion to establish a revolving fund, like how they can spend it or anything?
Well, the, for the, we're, when that's set up, we're going to need to know, well, you have to explain in the article what the purpose of
Yeah.
spending that money is for, and again, you have to have a spending cap.
Right.
It'll, so there'll be an article at town meeting, yeah.
Otherwise, that'd be have to be like a separate, set up as a separate budget item. I mean.
Well, it wouldn't be a budget item.
No, but I mean, I don't see any other way to do it besides the revolving fund. That's what I'm trying to say. I don't think there's any other option.
Several revolving funds that are voted annually.
Yeah, I mean, to, to, well, we've done this before, where we've harvested and then it goes into the general fund. Okay, I, I don't have any more questions. You?
No.
No. Do we make a motion tonight? Yes, please.
I'm just happy it's finally happening. It takes time. A lot of this stuff takes time. I do want to thank you, Tony, for all your efforts on this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thanks. Great idea. I'd like to make a motion that we establish a timber sales revolving account.
I would say pursuant to mass, I would reference the general laws, right?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Marlene, I just went ahead and signed these pay things for the new firefighters. We don't vote those, right?
You don't? I didn't realize they had been submitted.
Yeah, there's two new per diem firefighter EMTs.
Okay.
Jeremy Beach of Springfield and Anjelia Rodriguez of Holyoke. Okay, sorry, sign those, okay. Okay, so next, Marlene, we have the executive session. Is there any way we could just maybe move through the agenda and keep that for the end? Are you okay with that?
Whatever the board's comfortable with.
I mean, I, I'd hate to go into executive session and make people wait. Yeah, this, I don't know how long it'll take. All right, so we're gonna skip ahead. You might as well stay right there. Phil, to the DPW report. So we're joined tonight by Betsy Speeder to discuss agricultural water rate. And a discussion with the Water Superintendent about water rate, water service for agricultural use. So, Betsy, did you want to come up to the microphone?
Sure. Should I read this letter into the record?
Sure. What? Do we have that letter?
You have that letter.
It should be in your packet.
Karen Karelski.
Topic five.
Maybe I, I may have flipped right by it because I did read it. Go ahead, Betsy.
I am writing to you regarding a dispute I'm having with the town of Hatfield Water Department Director, Anthony Listowski. He is denying my right to use an outdoor faucet using the agriculture exemption rate for horses. This faucet is used exclusively for filling the horse's water tub across the street and sometimes hosing horses down. First, some history. Although I am a member of the Agriculture Committee here in Hatfield, I was not aware until two thousand and twenty-two when Bob Wagner told me that horses now come under the agricultural exemption. When still in my old house at fifty-two King Street in late two thousand and twenty-two, having learned of this exemption, I hired a local plumber, Chris Weatherby, as recommended by Mr. Listowski. Chris, Chris redid the plumbing in the basement and added a meter for the horse's use. This alteration cost approximately eighteen hundred dollars. As you may know, my house burned to the ground on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. As my new house was being built, I instructed the plumber, again, Chris Weatherby, to attach my outdoor faucet to the agriculture meter. This was based on its intended use solely for the horses. I do not have a garden to water, and I have never washed my car, nor do I have a pool. I'm not requesting that another outside faucet be attached to the agriculture meter, only the one used exclusively for horses. We've been using the outdoor faucet attached to the garage for the horses. It's the closest distance to the tub across the street and only requires one hose rather than the two that would be required if we ran it from the frost-free hydrant in the paddock. When the aforementioned frost-free hydrant recently malfunctioned and is still not working, I turned off the water in the basement that was labeled agriculture. When the outside faucet did not turn off, I became suspicious and soon confirmed that the water department had not allowed any outside faucet to be termed agriculture. I spoke to Mr. Listowski, and he was adamant that he would not allow any of my outside faucets to be connected to the agriculture meter and be billed at the agricultural rate. He stated that he had made an exception with my former house, but that he had no intention of continuing that designation to my new house. He explained that he could not monitor my water usage twenty-four seven. How could he know if I watered a garden, washed my car, filled a pool? In addition, he said that if he allowed me to use an outside faucet for agricultural purposes, then every person with a horse and a garden hose would want to do the same. Also, he was concerned that the next occupant of my house would continue this privilege. Although I am elderly and have progressive lung disease, I'm still alive and still have horses, and I feel I should be able to have the water the horses use billed under agriculture. Whoever may live in my house in the future could provide whatever justification or examination is necessary. Mr. Listowski stated that I had two choices. Firstly, I could dig under the road and across the street and put in another frost-free hydrant, or I could turn my water off in both the house and the barn. He repeated this threat three times. I believe he was alluding to the possibility that I would simply, without his authorization, have the water in the basement attached to the agricultural meter. I did not give him any cause for him to think this, even reporting that I plumber, Chris Weatherby, would certainly not make any changes without his approval. Although it is, of course, possible to dig a trench down the road and into the pasture across the street in order to install another frost-free hydrant, I do not have the funds for such a project. It is also quite unnecessary. As I stated, we are currently using the non-agricultural billed water for the horses as the frost-free hydrant, although new is, it's not working, and I can't dig it up till November. My excavator, David Lowden, has sent two men twice out to attempt a repair. This has not been successful, and appears that this frost-free hydrant will have to be replaced. I have been many frost-free hydrants over the years, and mostly have worked quite well. I've also had difficulty with different times, including one freezing and not thawing out until May. When that occurred a number of years ago, I indeed had to use our outside water faucet. At that time, we had a septic system, and water costs were not that extravagant. Now that I am attached to the sewer, the thought of having any horse water billed at the higher rate does not seem fair. I'm requesting that all horse water sources be attached to my agricultural meter, and I be billed at the agricultural rate for such use. Thank you for my view of such a request. And we did bring this up, I didn't bring it up, our chair. John brought that up at the last Ag meeting, and I did not ask for their support, but they wanted to give it, and they have written a letter, which you have a copy in your report, because it goes beyond my use. It's really the principle of agricultural use, which, as you know, we're very much in favor. We're the Ag Committee. And, and why should it matter whether it's an outside faucet or a frost-free hydrant? I mean, in the old house, I used the outside faucet. That was approved, and now he doesn't want to approve that for this new house. I really don't know why.
Okay, so, Tony, did you want to speak to the matter?
Sure. In her original house, she originally had the plumber come in, and she said it was eighteen hundred dollars. Well, then, there was a lot of work being done there. Because just the water meter's a hundred and fifty dollars, the radio is another hundred and twenty-five dollars. So there's an expense plus the plumber putting it in. We allowed for the outside barn to be metered off an agricultural use. When we looked in the basement and went, oh, my God, looking at the plumbing, because it was steel lines and everything else, just, it was, the way it was plumbed in.
This is in the old house?
Yeah, this is in the old house. The way it was plumbed in, we allowed for that one water faucet going across the street to be on the agricultural meter. So the barn and that outside faucet were there because it would have been a phenomenal expense to replace all this other plumbing, just hook it on with the regular house.
Okay.
The way it should. So we allowed it, and we had no problems going forward. Unfortunately, her house did burn to the ground, and everything got replaced new. And there was never any discussion with water department or plumbing inspector about hooking up this outside faucet a second time on the new house going across the street. I suggested, because you already have that line coming out, it's metered, it's going out to the barn, to dig across the street and put another yard hydrant in there and be done with it, and everybody's happy. But at this point, we're here because she's insistent about a garden hose and using the outside faucet. I mean, what's to say in five years down the road, ten years down the road? We're not gonna know what that water's being used for. Is it billed under agricultural rate? Is it billed water at sewer? We're not gonna know. So I don't see it as fair because no other house in town has that ability. They're either complete agricultural, like I'm suggesting, or they're residential, and they're paying water and sewer. I don't, I don't see it as being unfair.
Okay, so.
I do pay residential rates for the rest of my house. This, this outdoor faucet is used only for the horses. That's all it's for.
Right, I, I under, I under, I definitely understand what you're saying, but I understand what Tony's saying too, because you do have the ability to use it for other things. Right. I, I get where Tony's coming from, so, but we also, I just want to make sure everybody who has something to say about this has a minute to do so. So, John, you are here on behalf of the Agricultural Commission. And it does get a little dicey because you are on the Ag Commission, but you're also here. So that's a little bit of a conflict. It's quite a bit of a conflict to speak on behalf of the Agricultural Commission and yourself as a resident with an agricultural issue.
From my perspective.
What's that?
I did not ask them to write a letter of support.
I understand, but just know that that is, you know, so, John, did you want to speak? Will he, will we pick him up?
Yeah. I'm just concerned about the animal's safety. And we're in a climate change, and we're, you know, using more water for a lot of different things. And to maintain the quality of life for the animals, this is Betsy's horses, and just to maintain, you know, proper water supply for, for the animals. I, I, we, we've talked this amongst ourselves. I should see the town's position, see Betsy's position, and it's, how can you say it? It's unique.
Yeah.
And I can see Tony's logic, you know, because he's the, he's a lot of.
I think another factor has to, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, John. I understand the issue. We've had many discussions here prior about an outside faucet being off of a special rate because we've had people come in front of this board requesting an outside faucet on their house to be off of special rate so they could do their lawns and stuff. And we've denied that a few times because of the fact that if, if certain people get special faucets off their houses, then it causes a problem on the water sewer bills. It causes some other issues, and it's not fair for everybody. I mean, the decision we make up here, we have to think of how it affects the whole town and how it affects down the road. So I, I do entertain the fact that having a discussion on the Ag rate, and I do entertain this, having a discussion how to ensure that Betsy's horses are taken care of. But right now, the issue, like Tony has actually, he's gotten a lot of letters of support over the years since I've been on the board of his work doing, going out of his way, trying to help people. And I respect his opinion since I've known him over the years. But we have to consider as a outside faucet off of the Ag rate, how does that does affect the whole town and everybody? I mean, the, there was a water across the road which went off the Ag rate for, for the horses, right? I mean, that's, it used to be until the house burnt down, and now there's, there's issues with that pipeline going across.
There's only a garden hose, so garden hose running across Cowbridge Road, yes. There's only a garden hose, so, garden hose running across Cowbridge Road, yes, as these potato truck comes through, guess what? That garden hose is junk. It's, and it wouldn't be any different now.
So the outside faucet can't have a separate meter?
No.
Okay.
The outside faucet would simply go on the same meter that I already have for agriculture for the water that goes directly to the barn. Yes, it's an outside faucet, it's a hose you have to use to get water across the street. How else would you get it there?
It could be done, and it's a simple plumbing change in the basement, to do such option, but once again, what is that water going to be used for besides horses?
Nothing.
You know, because there's no one there to police it, there's, what if the house sells in a few years, and the new homeowners go, wow, look at that.
Right, I think we, so, I would agree with what you're saying, like, we certainly want to help you, Betsy, however we can, and make sure that obviously the horses are taken care of. We do everything we can to support agriculture. That's why we're sort of protective of these agricultural rate properties.
Could I just interrupt one minute?
Well, no. So, but we have to be careful about setting precedent. You know, the decision we may make about this could then mean that we could have people coming in saying, well, I have goats, I have chickens, I have, that I'm trying to water off of my hose from my house. So we do, this is not a small decision, and we have to be careful about it, because we are setting precedent, we could be setting precedent.
Well, I did bring Donna Murray here today, my friend, just so she could attest to the fact that that faucet is used only for the horses. I mean, it doesn't need somebody monitoring me 24/7. There is no other purpose for it. I mean, he said you could fill a pool, I don't have a pool.
So, Betsy, I completely agree, or I completely believe you, that's what you'll use it for. But the issue is precedent. So if I decide to have some animals in my backyard, and I say, well, I'm only going to use this for that, we don't have the ability to monitor that everywhere. There's a lot of people with animals that, that's my concern with it. I mean, we, as a board, always have to be careful with setting precedent.
Actually, I think this board, maybe not today, but I think we need to also review our policies that were in place on the Ag rate and stuff, and so we all understand the purpose of it too. That's just another conversation.
And so can I ask what we're, do you have a rough estimate of what the difference would be for her bill between regular rate and Ag rate?
Because now she's actually paying water and sewer on anything that's used in the house or that outside faucet. I mean, basically, it comes down to roughly .009 cents per gallon of water. As for with sewer, here, two, almost two cents altogether per gallon. Average horse per day uses about seven gallons per day, at least from when I was running racehorses, so, you know, you're talking 14, 15, 20 cents a day.
But I mean, that she's previously had an Ag meter, right?
Correct.
So was there any records, any records on what was used on that Ag meter previously?
It wasn't in there for very long before the house burned down.
Okay.
So we really don't have a running history. I can tell you that there's a resident on King Street also that has a secondary meter just for his horses out back, and he decided, he's like, I spent too much money on this for what I would have ever saved. I have another resident on Elm Street by the village, and he's got a second meter just for the horses out back, and he goes, it's not really saving me anything from what I really did. He goes after spending the expense buying a meter and having it plumbed in. So it's kind of a catch-22.
But I've spent that now. I mean, I've already spent that, so I should have an opportunity to, to saving over time.
So there is an agricultural meter?
Yes. There is an agricultural meter and a household meter. The household meter does water and sewer. The agricultural meter is just water going directly out to the barn, which she's stating that she can't use because it's broken right now. Well, that...
And so then, so you're wanting to use the house meter?
No.
No, no. She wants to, you've got two meters in the basement, one side by side. One goes to the barn, one goes to the house. Well, she wants to go off of this one on agricultural meter, put a tee in it, go up and over the ceiling, and hook up just that one outside faucet, so that it's not on the house meter.
Not the other outside faucet, but just that one that goes exclusively for horses, which I had before.
So how do we decide who gets these meters to begin with? Who's allowed to have them?
In our regulations, it just says, we allow for a secondary meter, so you're not paying sewer, and possibly the Ag rate for livestock purposes only. Because you can't say, I've got a 20 by 20 plot out in my yard, and I want to water my garden, I'm agricultural.
Or I have two chickens, right? So livestock would be larger animal.
Yeah.
Is that even defined?
Is it defined?
Yeah.
Like goats?
I didn't know horses were included for a long time, and then Bob Wagner said, oh yeah, we changed that years ago.
I mean, even back when I worked for the town, there was a flat fee for horses and cows.
Yeah, it was $7 per horse, way back.
When I first started working here 17 years ago, there was a form that Louis Slisch would have, the local farmers that wanted to qualify for Ag rate, had to show their income, their expenses. There was a long process in order to qualify for Ag.
Right. And that's what I was inquiring about, who files that now?
Well, when we abated the regulations, back when Mr. Boyle was on the board, we had included for livestock purposes only. We added that in to make it easy instead of all the paperwork that, yeah, you've got horses in your backyard, okay, we'll allow that, or cows.
Where is that regulation? Because I haven't been able to find it online.
Yeah.
I mean, I've only found, I found the old regulation. I was just curious where the new regulation is.
And does it delineate specific animals?
No. It just says livestock purposes only.
And for years, I didn't...
I didn't print out our old Department of Direct.
But it isn't the...
I don't know if it's online or not, but this was adopted and amended in 2010.
Okay.
And that's the highlighted section.
So that's what they, you have a copy of the 2010 right there now. I do?
It was Bob Wagner who told me that they changed it to include horses.
I don't think I have it.
2000.
Those kind of left here, I think, for us.
Right, but amended 2010? Yes, I do have it. And what page, what section is that under? What page is it?
Pages aren't, it's a chapter. They're chapter numbers.
Yeah, 8.6.
8.6. And I just found this amended version, I happened to come across it.
8 meters.
That's why some of the policies online have to be updated, because they're...
What is the definition of livestock?
Animals.
Any animal.
I provided that too.
So rabbits?
Yeah.
Chickens?
I mean, yeah.
8.2, 8.2, boy, this is...
So this says, all new water services shall be metered, the property owner is responsible for it. Only one meter will be allowed unless for agricultural livestock purposes to avoid sewer costs, and that's what you're asking for?
Oh, yeah, I have one for residential, one for...
And so how does that not fit into this policy, if that's what she's...
She already currently has it.
Right.
The problem is that she wants to use water from her house instead of the one that goes out to the barn.
Well, it's all from the house, and one goes out to the barn, but one goes to the outside faucet, which is used only for horses.
So the connection comes in from the street to her house, and you want to tee off inside the house to each individual beater?
Yeah.
I could draw you a picture easier.
Right.
The water comes into the house, it comes in and it splits off, goes to two different meters.
Yep.
This one's the house, this one goes out to the barn for the horses, okay?
Sure.
Well, what she wants to do is the one that splits off and goes to the house, she wants to replumb it to go from the one going out to the barn, up and over the house, just to her outside faucet on the side of the house, as being part of the agricultural. Currently, the way it's plumbed in, it's part of the house, because that's what everybody's house is. You turn on the water at Diana's house outside, it's on the house meter.
And it used to be piped over to the barn off of that meter?
No, no, no. It's...
I don't know why I'm having such a hard time with this, but...
So you would be okay if this was piped from the house, but the spigot wasn't until the barn?
Here, you want to use?
Yeah, you've got to come here. All right, so, we've got a house here, we've got a barn here, we've got water line coming in, and we got X and X, those are meters, okay? This one's for the house, this one is for the farm.
And that line's got a problem.
Why can't it just stay that way?
Okay, so this is what's going on. Water comes into the house, and there's a meter for the house and a meter for the barn. Well, right now, she can't use this one out here at the barn because it's broken and needs to get it fixed. Our suggestion was to run off of that same line, go across, and put a frost-free hydrant in the field across the street.
Under the road.
She wants to fix the plumbing, so it comes off of this in the house from the farm meter, just to this outside faucet right here, so she can drag the garden hose over here instead. That's what's trying to...
Which we've done for 50 years.
And you can use that outside faucet for other things too, is what you're saying, so, yeah. I mean, we've dragged a hose across the street for 50 years, I mean, that's how...
But even with your plan, you could use the hose for anything?
No, no, no. Well, technically, yes, you could, but, you know, to drive down King Street and look over here and see...
This is Cowbridge?
This is Cowbridge, right here.
Okay.
And this is King Street, right here.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, to drive by and see that would be nothing, but to see the garden hose out here going somewhere else and doing something, we don't know. I just...
Okay.
I think I get it.
We only allowed it originally just because it would have been a phenomenal expense for her to change it originally, prior to the house burning. But this was never discussed during house building, and it's a brand-new, beautiful house.
Yeah.
So...
So I think I get what you're saying, but I want to make sure that everybody is doing the same thing, not...
We have no other circumstance like in town.
So how do other people do it? If somebody else were to do it, you wouldn't allow them to have a meter off of their house? Or you would not have the agricultural meter off the house?
So if I decided to keep a horse in my backyard, and we have plenty of neighbors who do that around us...
You'd be calling Monahan up, the plumber, first of all, put a second meter in, you'd be calling up a local contractor, Richie Thayer, somebody. You'd be putting a hole through your foundation and running the line all the way out back to wherever you want it, and all set and up. It wouldn't be coming off your outside faucet.
So I guess what we're lacking from these policies is saying where that meter has to be discharged.
Say that again.
Where the water has to be discharged from. We don't have that written down anywhere.
No, we do not.
We just, we have it.
And this is, so, this is the one that, the meter that's in the house, the meter works, but what's broken out in the barn? The water line?
Oh, the frost, trust me, I've had such a problem with this frost-free hydrant, I mean, and David Logan says he can't dig it up till November. I mean, it just doesn't, I've had three plumbers come there, charge me $120 for the first one, supposedly fixed it, he didn't, I mean...
But, I mean, it sounds like replumbing it over the top of the house is expensive too, right? So...
When the house...
No, it really wouldn't be very expensive for her to do what she really wants to do, but once again, we're setting precedents. Digging up what she's got to replace out at the barn, which is first priority or a problem, that's not cheap. I mean, that...
Well, it will happen.
The unit costs a couple hundred dollars, but at the same time, just tap into that one line that goes out to the barn, and everybody's happy.
Well, I'm not happy because the most direct route to get water across the street, where I have pasture, and which we've done for the last 50 years, is with a garden hose from the house. Now, in the past, it's what we used, I didn't have the separate meter, but we were on the septic system, so water wasn't particularly anything I worried about, but now with the sewer, it's quite expensive, and it, this outside faucet is used exclusively for the horses, and so I don't get why I'm being denied the ability to put that faucet attached to my agricultural meter, which is already in there. And in fact, when the house was built, I asked the plumber...
Excuse me, Betsy, we'll reschedule? Okay.
Sorry, Chris.
All right.
I asked the plumber to make sure that the outside faucet was attached to the agricultural meter. He didn't do that, because obviously Tony told him he couldn't. I did not even know it wasn't attached until I was having a problem with the frost-free hydrant, and we started using it, and I noticed when we turned it off in the basement, it didn't turn off. So that made me suspicious, as I said, and that's when I discovered that it wasn't attached. So, of course, I spoke to Tony, but he said, well, I made an exception in the past, I'm not going to do it again, because I can't monitor your use.
Okay, so...
I'm just wondering if another option might be some type of abatement until the proper repair is able to be done? I don't know if that's even worth entertaining or not.
I don't even think you're talking very much money to begin with.
So I just, and I, can I ask one more question? John, did you, did your committee discuss this as precedent-setting? Or was this discussed just as this one specific issue? Because...
Just one specific issue.
And, I mean, I guess I would like to send it back to the Ag Committee to discuss this as precedent-setting, but I think you have to be very careful, Betsy, about being part of that discussion because of conflict of interest, but...
I felt that the letter wasn't just for me, it was for all of agriculture, that any device or whatever is used specifically for animals and not for anything else would come under the agricultural rate. That was the precedent-setting thing, as I would see it, and why wouldn't, I just, I don't understand it. I do not understand why that I have this faucet, it's used only for the horses, and it's a very simple matter to correct it in the basement, because it should have been done that way in the beginning, why it couldn't be attached to the agricultural meter rather than the residential meter?
I understand what you're saying, but that's for your house. We've had a lot of people come in requesting a second meter, and they want to water their lawns and stuff. I mean, I don't know how the...
Well, that's not agriculture.
If people decide to start coming in here because they have, you know, like Diana said, they have a horse or this or that, we still have to look at...
That's different.
How to make the changes and make adjustments and...
But it's not different. You have a horse. I mean, we're talking about people could be coming in asking about other, if livestock could be rabbits or chickens, like, we do have to, you know, we...
I know. What I'm saying is, I mean, I would certainly hear the argument that if you're watering your lawn, it's not going into the sewer, so why should they pay for that? But that's a decision, a financial decision that you, as a select board, made, which is separate from a decision about agriculture. We're a right-to-farm community, and all we can do, the more we can do to support agriculture in all its varied forms, the better, as far as I believe.
I don't think our, we're conflicting easily. I think we do provide for agricultural metering, we just have been against putting an outside faucet off of an agricultural meter, because the precedent it could set could be detrimental to the town, it could cause a whole can of worms.
A lot of people could qualify for an outside faucet going on an agricultural meter because they have animals.
But I don't use this for anything else.
But they could argue the same thing, right? And then it... And then it becomes, it does become impossible to police because, yeah. So it's, this, so this isn't, Betsy, as much as I think we all want to help you and we, I would like to find a solution that can really work for Betsy, we do have to be careful about setting precedent. And I would, I mean, I guess I would like the Agricultural Commission to have a discussion about that because we know a lot of people in town. If livestock is any kind of animals, I mean, I have neighbors with chickens, we, you know, there, there's animals everywhere and so-
But you're not going to spend $1,200 to have a plumber come in and talk up a separate line just to water your chickens.
I understand that, but, but aren't you saying that it-
Exactly, it could happen.
I mean, yeah. Or they could have animals and then get rid of animals now they have an agricultural rate for-
Well, I think Tony was making that point about my being in my house and I do have a progressive lung disease, or how long I'm going to be there and who's going to next be in the house. But I think the new person would have to qualify, they have to, you know, examine his purposes of using that. And if it was used to water the lawn, no, then you can't, you can't use that.
But I think we want to have regulations or something so that we don't have to, every person doesn't come in here and asking us what to do.
I don't think it's going to happen.
Which, well, it's happening right now. By you asking for a certain thing that other people aren't asking for, and if we give it to you, then somebody else can ask for the same thing.
Well, I had this before, remember?
Right.
I mean, can it be grandfathered in from before? I mean, it's the same, I mean, is it located the same spot, goes across the street? I mean, and that's actually how we do it.
How many horses do you have, Betsy?
There's only three now. Scales down, you know.
Yeah, understood. I mean, are you-
I think, I'd like some answers from legal too. I mean, we, maybe we should ask ag commission to get back to us, have a discussion with them, make sure before we change any precedent, we actually know what we're actually going to do.
What is the mechanism now to apply for an ag rate and receive approval?
There is none.
Well, that's another thing, that's something we should be doing.
That's, that's something that was handled before I started working here.
You mentioned Louise, she was the treasurer.
Yeah, and she handled all that. I mean-
It just went away?
Just, nobody ever forwarded it. I mean, we've gone through how many treasurer collectors?
Why has that gone on for so long?
Right.
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't had any new applications except for when she wanted a second meter and we had allowed for-
No other app, you have to apply to get an ag rate? Yeah.
No, it was just, it was just, it was-
Second beater.
Yeah.
So, all right, so when she applied, who did she apply to?
Well, I can tell you, I can tell you what I did. When Bob Wagner told me about this, that's when I called Tony and he did all the arrangements. He recommended Chris Weatherby. Chris Weatherby came into my former house, did it, and I thought he would do the same for my new house. And I was surprised when he didn't.
So that was a part of the call.
I, yeah, I don't, I definitely don't feel ready to make a decision tonight.
Since I've been here, there's only been three brand-new ag rate meters put into this town. She's one of them, one on King Street and one on Elm Street. And those were all for livestock purposes. Other than that, we haven't had anything where, what qualifies you as a farm or produce.
Well, yeah, in all fairness, so that everybody's treated fairly, there should be a process and it should be in writing.
Right.
I don't have the staff to do that.
A lot of people won't do it because it is rather expensive to put the other meter in and then you're charged for a second meter too.
So when it was approved by, I'm assuming, the treasurer previously, Louise was the town clerk treasurer, and she would notify the water department and then you would update the billing to reflect that ag rate?
I didn't even do that back then. And that was all handled in that office.
Because they were doing the billing?
Yeah, they were doing all the billing.
And back then, is this, there was meters back then?
Yeah, there was meters.
I remember back when it was flat rate.
Yeah.
There were different-
There was little notebooks.
They were older meters, they were the old meters back then.
Yeah, and you, you reported how many cows or horses you had and you got billed flat fees for those. So that's back in the-
Yeah, I think the 70s.
Dinosaur, dinosaur ages.
So, so maybe this is already in place somewhere that's been skipped over the last few years. We just got to find out where that is.
So we really do, I do feel like we need to do a little bit more homework, Betsy. Understand that we, I'm very sympathetic to your situation and we want to see if we can help you, but we, we do have to be careful, you know, about setting precedent and making sure that we're-
With, with any use of water, I mean, you know, there are farmers with keys that can go around and get the water and do we monitor whether they're using it for their cows or they really, I mean, there has to be a certain level of trust, I believe, and Tony told me he trusted me before.
I think we all trust you.
And I said it's only for the horses.
We all trust you, Betsy.
We solidly trust you.
Yeah, 100%.
And I brought Donna here just to verify that with me because, you know-
He would have believed you even if Donna wasn't here, but we do, we do believe Donna too. Yeah, I mean, I just hope you can appreciate the, from our perspective, what-
I don't really understand it because to me, it is just so straightforward. If, if the source of water is for the horses, then why couldn't it go under the agricultural rate? So what does it matter whether it's a frost-free hydrant going in this direction or under my road or a hose? I mean, I don't know if there's an indication that that's somewhat dangerous to run a hose across the road. I mean, it's Cowbridge Road, it has some traffic, but we only leave it running. I mean, we don't leave the hose in the road because it would destroy the road as you, the hose, as you said. So we fill the tub and we haul it back. And if we ran two hoses from the barn, which is what Tony said originally, just get a longer hose, well, they're very heavy and I'm not taking care of my own horses right now. I have friends that are doing that. And when you're hauling two heavy hoses, 200-foot hoses as opposed to one, it makes a huge difference, particularly when, as the water get, as the winter comes on, you have to drain it. I mean, it's a lot easier using one hose and then, of course, as, as it starts to freeze, the horses come to the barn side during the winter and then frost-free hydrant better be fixed by then because otherwise it's going to be really upsetting. It's just a problem. I mean, it's a new house. Believe me, I've got lots of problems that are in all those categories and it's hard getting people to finish your house. It's hard getting a workman to come and dig it up and do it, I don't know. It's just, it's one of many problems. But to me, it is just so straightforward that the purpose for this frost-free hydrant, not frustrating, for the outside faucet is just for the horses. So why shouldn't it be billed? And I thought it was going to be billed at the agricultural rate. That was my thought.
Yes, John?
I've got a question to ask Tony. Not that this matters much in Betsy's case, but there's a sweeper truck filling up water across from Myers Produce this afternoon. A sweeper truck. Is that something that you've been monitoring?
Myers Produce?
Like, just to park CNS hydrant across the street.
Yep.
So, do you notify?
Oh, absolutely. That's part of Warner Brothers.
Okay.
Well, they wanted to fill up out on Route 5 and because of the age of the water main, I'm like, oh, no, 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 no.
They just want to make sure because-
No. Every once in a while, we have another, several other contractors that do come in and fill up. We got Henshaw Farms that fills up with actual drinking water for other facilities and they give us a stipend here and there if we decide to bill them, but-
I just want to make sure.
Oh, yeah.
Any more questions?
No, just I have more, I have more questions, but not tonight, tonight's not the time.
I agree. I don't, I don't think I have enough to make a decision on any of this.
Yeah, I want to get this right, Betsy.
Okay.
We'll go back, have a meeting and we'll discuss with Tony and if we have a chance with legal, go back and find out exactly. Because I did read research, our minutes and there's a, there's a gap and it's like, I don't know where, where a certain amount of years went and we discussed this.
Okay, well, we'll look into that.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for coming down, Betsy.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tony. And thank you, John.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Oh, no, no, we're, listen, we're trying to understand this and we will figure it out. We'll figure something out.
I agree with that.
Are you also here, Tony, for this? Tony, are you escaping what about this potential increase in water sewer rates, agricultural rates, including a future public hearing?
He will be probably for the next meeting though. Yeah, we just want to put it out there.
Obviously, you know, we've been raising water and sewer rates over the years. In the past two years, we have not touched agricultural rate, which, that doesn't quite make sense to me because everything goes up.
Right.
So why we never adjusted that one, I don't understand.
So this says water and sewer rates and agricultural water rate? So you're just, you're, you're going to suggest an increase in regular water and sewer rates?
Across the board.
So, so let me just-
We're working with a consultant.
Yeah.
An analysis is currently being done and will be presented at a future meeting.
So Dave Prickett's group is doing, again, we did it two and a half years ago because we missed a half a year billing this cycle, but we did it two and a half years ago and that ran out and he's doing another two-year program to see where our rates should be. Because remember, when our rates were too low, we didn't qualify for USDA. We had to raise the rates.
That's what I was going to say. Yeah. For, you know, we, we went a lot of years without raising rates, which sort of put us behind.
Right.
And to get us to where we need to be to qualify for these FDA loans and other programs, we have to have-
Your rates have to meet a certain parameter within that loan program and it didn't and then we raised them and it did. So that's how we managed to get that loan for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So we're looking at him again, of course, and he's doing the analysis and he said-
That analysis will be presented at a future meeting.
Okay, so that's just in October. There's nothing we need to do tonight? You just wanted to let us and townspeople know that?
Because we, we did discuss over the years of tweaking a little bit each year instead of hitting the town with a big, big fat bill down the road.
You know, and that's exactly what happened that time.
Exactly.
At that time, it went up 30% was because they never did anything for five years. They didn't increase nothing.
Right, we're trying to catch up for five years and not raising anything.
And you played catch-up, so.
Right.
You know, I mean, operations within both plants is skyrocketing and you have to, you know, maintain a level of income coming in, revenue coming in to support that.
Right.
I mean, at one point, we did have a minimum of 2.5% increase on both water and sewer every year that just, it was automatic, voted on by board and it was there. And that ended up going by the wayside. I think something like that should actually be reinstituted, but even a 2.5% nowadays, that really doesn't equate to much. I mean, with inflation on everything that's going up, you know?
So you guys want to come back with some suggestions and we have a hearing on it, right? I mean, that'd be the process.
Yeah, so I think he's putting, he has, I think, most of the data now, so he'll be presenting it.
Okay. Well, good to know. Thank you. Thanks, Tony.
Yep.
We also have on here, Phil, Don't Go Anywhere, the Main Street Culvert Restoration Project, the recommendation to award the bid. Did you want to stay for that? For the EJ Prescott bid?
Yeah, so, you know, I'm recommending them. They were the sole bidder, of course, and, I mean, he gave a good price. He's, he's in the business to do that type of work, to slip line that line and put the liner in it. We did go back to conservation and we did have to file a notice of intent to do that project and I looked today and it seems like it went through DEP with a couple of restrictions, but I think we were on a path to having this, at least through conservation's eyes, a viable project, so.
And the bid came in at $242,000.
That's the bid.
Can you explain why we were-
I just want to make that clear that the 375 is because the DPW is going to do, do in-house work, so we have to, you know, we have to provide some material, we have to provide the excavator-
Right.
-to keep the cost down because without that, you would have been prevailing wage on that, at that end, which you won't be doing.
Okay.
So is this bid like a slip and insert that they put inside?
So what this does is they put a, it's like a metal sleeve inside that pipe with a six-inch gap all the way around, then it, it's almost like spray foam, but it's not, it's grout. That's what they call it, it's a grout system, a poly, polytech product that, then they pull the slip line out after, so it'll be all new inside.
Because of the size, do they have to weld the sections together as they push it in or?
No, I don't think so.
Will that come in one?
I think it bolts together, actually. I think it bolts together and then they blow the stuff on the top and the gaps, then they come back and they grout the outside of where the spaces between the pipe.
Oh, so what they slide in is impermanent, it's pulled back out?
No, they pull it out, yeah.
Okay.
Is it part of the bid, actually clean it out before they slide it in?
Yeah, there's not much stuff in there, in the bottom.
And so this can happen this construction season?
Yes, as long as we get the approval through DEP, through conservation. And they're supposed to meet October, in the middle of October, which I think they should meet before that, now that it went to DEP and he issued an intent number. I think that they should have a meeting.
Who, Conservation Commission?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, let's see if we can urge them to meet sooner than that.
I don't think it should wait to their regular meeting in October.
Have you contacted them?
I saw the correspondence today that said that they would wait until their October meeting.
Well, can we contact them and say, because of the urgency of this, we want them to meet in the Culvert?
Could we urge them to maybe?
I will ask them if they could have a meeting, I mean, to bring up that one subject.
Yeah. Because that, that puts you three weeks.
Because you have to, you still have to, you know, after they-
And we don't know what the fall weather is going to be like and so why would you?
And there's more to it because you have to, it has to be done within a 21-day period once DEP gives you that notice of intent number. So to do that, you still have to post something in the paper that you're working there.
They have to publish, so they need to allow, because there's a period of time for that.
Right, and you still have to notify a butter, so, I mean, it's a process and if they don't meet to hold their requirements until October, you might not be doing that project this year.
Well, that may be why, considering today's the 17th and they're talking about October 10th, that's probably the time period they need to advertise and post. That probably meets, I'm guessing that that probably is the period that they're working with.
Maybe.
Okay.
So to do it sooner could be very, very tight for them.
Well, let's just double-check that. Yeah, let's see the first possible date it could be and urge them to try to do that. Thank you, Tony.
Yeah, we've got to try to find a highway to expedite this, so, I mean, and let people know the urgency of this on that committee.
Okay, so we have quite a bit of other, so we should award this bid? Vote please to award that. You have this paperwork?
I don't have that paper, no.
Oh, sorry.
Just, I'll read it. Okay, make a motion to award the bid to EJ Prescott for the Cowbridge Culvert Restoration Project in the amount of $242,000.
One second.
That's what it says, right? That's what it says, right?
A motion made, and second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for the work on this, Marlene and Phil, to get this bid and everything else. Thank you very much. This only needs my signature, so, okay. Marlene, do you prefer we do the executive session and then do your stuff, or can we rapid-fire through your stuff?
Actually, the, oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
Is this an amended? I have two different agendas. One was in the packet, just a second page.
Just a second page?
And there's topic six, Town Administrator Report, and it's like more flushed out with Markham merger.
Four items?
I know. David's been waiting patiently over there.
Oh, that's my report item. That's, yeah, just some of the items there. Yes, that's just what I, things that I'm reporting.
So that's, okay, yeah. I know, David, we do want to get you, but I think we could just, can we run through this quickly, Marlene?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll get to, then we, then we don't have to return to open session.
That works for me. Okay. FY '24 and '25 Financial Update Report. If the board does not know, Markham has merged with CBiz, and it, I know that was just a little less than a year that it was Mark bought out by Markham.
There's just been more changes with them.
So, you know, my, my inquiry as soon as possible was to find out if there was going to be any impact to the town, and I am told that there will be no changes.
Okay.
Status of FY '24. Both financial teams, the accounting and treasurer collector's office are closing out FY '24. Initially, we're looking at a, a very small deficiency, and on the school side, we met this morning, and actually, they have reduced that deficiency. They're just looking at two, two grants, but the dollar amount is small, and they're still, still working on that. Cashbook variance, only $245. Revenues actually are at 15.2 for the year, and expenditures at 13.6. Balance sheet is expected to be submitted to the Division of Local Services the end of September. I've been in contact with the auditor, Tony Roselli, so he will be lining up the audit for early October.
It seems like it just finishes and it starts again.
Yeah. For FY '25, July, half of it's reconciled, but I, you probably have, since I prepared this-
Three quarters of it is reconciled.
Okay, all right. Oh, and then also, we're working on, town officials, you know, finance offices are working on the recap, which has to be submitted to the Division of Local Services as well. So we've all been looking at local receipts and state receipts.
Okay.
Alcohol Beverage Control Commission had a hearing on September 10th for Hatfield Variety at 60 Main Street. This is regarding a compliance check violation. The attorney representing his client, the client was not available to attend, or he was experiencing some difficulties connecting to the hearing, testified that his client admitted that the ID was requested, but he did not read the birth date, and the investigation reported that the clerk did not ask for an ID. But since then, there have been requirements, scanners been put in place, and employees are receiving training.
Yeah, he's come in and talked to us about this already.
Across the street.
Yeah. Didn't he come in and talk to us about it?
That was up here. That, 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 which is packed store, was for up the street, on School Street. ABCC has said they're going to take it under advisement.
Okay.
And will issue a decision. And then also with Treeworks, I, I do expect to have additional information. I had expected to have more information to report out tonight, but as I had mentioned before, both the, both host community agreements, the one that was approved in 2018, and then there was a settlement reached back in February.
Right.
And the current host community agreement that was renewed are in non-compliance. That has been issued by the Cannabis Control Commission.
Entire Control Commission is in non-compliance, but that's another discussion.
So I will report out at a future meeting, and we're going to proceed with, we'll have to update those, those host community agreements.
One thing you just skipped over was that October 15th, we have a tentative tax classification hearing.
Yes. We are planning, that is the, the target date the assessors have set, and feeling pretty comfortable about it. That is probably the earliest Hatfield has ever had.
It is. It's usually November. Yeah.
So it's pretty good.
That's very good. Okay.
Treasurer's office and assessor's office are moving along quite well.
Thank you.
I just have one item under old business when you move to that.
Yep, okay.
I just, because Phil's here on the upstairs, the heat pumps are in, so what's the status on sort of getting that stuff out of there? So that room technically could be used with the heat pumps in place, right? Because the table's up there, there's chairs up there.
It could be.
If need be. I just wonder where we're at, and I know JDR is going to be coming in and put the wall up, right, so.
Right. That's on the other end of the meeting room, yes. So we could use that meeting space. We would just access the meeting room through that second floor.
If, if need be. That's all I'm saying.
Yes.
But I mean, who's responsible for taking care of the stuff that's up there to get it out of there or moved into the balcony area?
The Historical Commission is still, I, I have, I've reached out to the Historical Commission a few times, and I have not received a response. I understand they're still trying to work out details, and I had been told that they were looking for more space, but that did not come from the Historical Commission.
Okay.
That came from the Historical.
But I mean, for now, I mean, if it's a rainy day, I don't know, we could, could, could the town actually just move some of that stuff onto the balcony for now and?
Move it into the storage room? Yeah, we could do that.
That's what it was built for.
Yeah.
I mean, exactly.
The items up there, they would like to keep. We know that. We have confirmed that. Everything else that was being disposed of is gone.
I'd just like to see this project. As you know, I'm always, let's keep moving on these projects and keep things going.
Keeping us on task with this. We appreciate that, Ed.
So I'll be the complainer.
Who moved the stuff into that room, into the meeting room?
The Historical Commission did. So they wanted to go through everything, which they did. They separated out what they would like to keep and what was going to be disposed of.
I just don't like to send any DPW employees there by themselves to move something, and then something, oh, oh, it's damaged.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with that, Phil, and I mean, this has been such a priority for them, so here we are at the finish line, and then now it's, they're not responding, so.
I mean, if they need help moving something heavy or whatever, surely, but I don't think that the DPW employee should-
No, I don't, I, I agree. I don't think it is, I, I don't think so. I, I would agree with you, Phil, but, but I would certainly hope that after all of the work and effort that's been put into getting this space ready, that they'd be ready to use it.
Yeah, and it's, it's really holding you up from this meeting up there because the stuff's in that room.
Right.
That's all. This stuff just needs to get out of there. That's all.
Okay, well, maybe we could urge them to-
And you have instructions or something for somebody on the operation of the heat pumps if need be or whatever, yeah?
Pretty simple, I guess.
Press the button.
David has been very patient. Are we done with the?
But you got to know where the clicker is.
Are we done with the agenda items so that we can take up?
Unless you want to take up any more, if you want to have any additional discussion regarding the use of ARPA funds.
Not at this time.
Again, we're just, okay, that, that's fine.
That's, I just, I don't think there's anything to discuss right now. Okay, we just have to see how the other projects-
One of those funds have to be spent by?
December 31st.
Or 30th. I think it's the 30th.
30th. The 29th, Phil.
Yeah, and anything that requires a contract has to be in place as of that date. Money does not have to be expended, but all obligations contractual needs to be-
The sooner the better.
Yeah, that's why it continues to be on the agenda.
So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session by roll call, vote pursuant to Mass. General law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, number eight, to consider interview applicants for employment or appointment by preliminary screening committee in the chair. If the chair declares that open meeting will have detrimental effect on the application of qualified applicants.
I'll second that, and towards the aye. And we will not be returning, correct?
And we will not be returning, I believe.
Zinal, aye.
Zinal, aye.
Thank you. Thanks for being patient.